Good evening. Welcome to the August 18th, 2025, meeting of the Silver City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Councillors, first on the agenda, we have the consent docket. Questions, comments, or action on consent?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have public hearings. Item six. Six A is received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment to rezone from small lot, single-family residential and agricultural to agriculture. Property address at 624 West 22nd Avenue, CC-25-116. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Henry.
Mayors, mayors, councillors. Today we have the map amendment to rezone this property, as you said, from RSS to RSS and A to A or agriculture. Here's the aerial view where you can see the surrounding uses. Most of the property surrounding is floodplain. This property is north of 22nd, in between Washington and Knoblock. Here's the street view where you can see us looking north of 22nd Avenue. Here's the zoning map where you can see the property, the majority of which is already zoned A or agriculture, and the southern portion of the property is zoned RSS or small lot, single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to build a barn on this property as the primary structure. There's no structures existing right now. So that would mean agriculture would be the primary use of the structure as the barn is the first building to be built. So agriculture zoning district is the only zoning district where you're allowed to do that, which is why the applicant is requesting to rezone the entire property, functionally this southern portion, which is RSS to A or agriculture. Here's the future land use map where it calls for agriculture and low-density residential uses at this property. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any.
Councillors, any questions for staff? Hearing done. I will open the public hearing. I don't think I have anyone sign up to speak at this public hearing. So I will close the public hearing. Henry, was there a recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes, sir. On July 15th, 2025, with a vote of four to zero, planning commission recommended that the city council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thank you. Councillors.
Motion to accept planning commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the planning commission recommendation. Please vote. That recommendation is approved with a vote of five to zero. Item six B is received public comment for a closing of a portion of utility easement property located at 707 East Airport Road, CC-25-117. We have good notice on this.
Yes, we do.
Take it away.
Yes, sir. Today, we're looking at the closing for the hub located at 707 East Airport Road. Here's the aerial of the property you can see outlined in pink. This property is south of Airport Road, east of Perkins, and just north of the railroad tracks here, which is why it has that curved line on the southern edge. Here's the zoning map where you can see this property is zoned CG or commercial general with industrial light to the west and industrial general to the north, south, and east. Here's the street view where you can see the existing hub under construction and the awning right here, which we'll talk about on our next slide. So here's the exhibit that we're looking at tonight. This dotted line, which let me switch to here. This dotted line right here is the awning that was shown in the last picture. This orange rectangle right here is the existing general utility easement. The applicant is proposing to close this orange outline, which is the north 227 and a half feet of the 30-foot general utility easement. There is this existing water line right here, which is this blue line with the W, that will still have to be covered with an easement. So we are, the applicant has submitted a 20-foot easement to be dedicated over that water line with an encroachment agreement that will be before city council for acceptance as well. I'm open to answer any questions if you have any, and the applicant with Olson Engineering is also here.
Councillors, questions?
So we'd be closing one easement before they requested the next step, which would be to provide that easement over the water line.
Yes, councillor.
That sort of seems backwards.
It does a little bit seem backwards. I mean, is the idea that we're basically just creating a smaller easement after all of this happens?
And the reason for that is there's this, can't think of the word for it, the upper, the post that is holding it up, the structural support there is right here in the easement. So the encroachment agreement, which would also be brought before council, is that 20-foot easement would also be functional easement. The awning is high enough that we could still do work to get to that water line if needed, but with that structural support on the edge of that easement, we would be able to use that portion of the easement. So that's why the 20-foot easement that would be dedicated would be outside of that post around.
How wide is this one again?
Thirty foot.
Thirty foot. So we can't just like make this easement 20 feet instead of 30 feet?
Great question. David Barth Development Services. I just stepped up here to help out a little bit because I've had more history with this particular project. So what's in place right now is a 30-foot general utility easement. So any utility could go there. If we left that as it is, another franchise utility could show up after the hub is constructed and they could bore in a new fiber line or a new gas line or something. So the only utility in that easement right now is our city water line. And so we visited with the developer and, you know, it seemed to be the best, the win-win for both the utility and for the developer is for them to close the northern portion of this general utility easement, and then they will grant back to us a water line only easement. The reason why it's being narrowed is exactly what Henry said is because there's some of their infrastructure foundations for that, for that canopy or some bollards for the parking area that were in that 30-foot. And so we asked them to narrow it to 20 feet, and 20 feet still gives us plenty of room to access the water line. There's also restrictions that will be in the encroachment agreement, which we'll also bring back with the water line easement, that will talk about, you know, the maximum height or the minimum height that has to be under that canopy so that we can get in there if we needed to with a backhoe to, you know, maintain our water line. Great question about the timing of this. You know, I've been reminded that if we close an easement, the easement's still there and it can be reopened. So it doesn't really go away until it's vacated. And so the first step is to close this easement, and then we'll come back at the next council meeting or plan to come back with a water line only easement and the encroachment agreement.
So out of curiosity, why aren't we dealing with both at the same time?
Or concurrent? Yeah, why aren't we doing it all tonight? I think that was an option. I don't really have a good answer for that. That was just the advice I was given was to split it up and to do it, do the closing tonight. I guess, you know, maybe because if you decided to not close the easement, then the other two things would become null and void essentially. So the closing first and then bring back the water line easement and the encroachment agreement.
Not that we're going to do that, but I mean, there's a risk. Now, we close the easement, we don't approve the next one, and there's a problem there then.
Well, the easement's still there. It could be reopened.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, so that point about we close it, but we're still, we can still access it. We just open it back up until we actually vacate.
Right.
And we wouldn't vacate it until we've actually got the other water line easement in place.
Right. So closing it just keeps anyone else from going in there right now and putting in new infrastructure.
Okay. That makes sense. We just want to get it closed.
Thank you. We still have access to our stuff, but it keeps anyone else from installing new infrastructure there.
Are there like a line of utilities outside this place just waiting to go drill into the easement?
I don't believe so.
Understood. Thank you. Councillors, any further questions for staff? This time I will open the public hearing. I know there's an applicant or representative of the applicant here. If you have something you'd like to say, you can. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at this public hearing. Okay, I will close the public hearing. There's a staff recommendation on this, correct?
Yes, sir. Staff recommends a motion to close the north 227 and a half feet of the 30-foot wide utility easement, more particularly described in Book 2491, page 602.
Thank you, Henry. Councillors.
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation. Please vote. That recommendation is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item seven, general orders. Seven A is the Barry Dunn Update Presentation on the Enterprise Research Planning Project. Mr. Brad Stewart.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Brad Stewart, IT Director. Back in January of this year, city council approved a contract with Barry Dunn to provide ERP consultation services. After that contract was executed, Barry Dunn has led us through an extensive assessment and evaluation of our current software systems. I can personally attest to the many hours that our staff has participated in that effort alongside Barry Dunn. There have been over 70 meetings conducted by Barry Dunn with city staff, and they have now completed their assessment and review, and they've shared findings with city staff and are here to provide an update this evening on that project currently and to outline the next steps in the process. Ryan Doyle is here on behalf of Barry Dunn to provide that update, and I will turn it over to Ryan now.
Excited to be here today. Ryan Doyle, we're principal within Barry Dunn. We are a nationwide consulting firm. My team focuses exclusively on local government, working routinely to assess the current environment of software systems and use by cities and counties across the United States. We do so through an independent objective framework, so we don't sell or develop hardware, software, or make recommendations on which software to select. We take it from an independent perspective of looking at what is in the best interests of our client organizations. So happy to be here today. Flew in from Portland, Maine today. It's a little bit cooler on the coast than it is here, but I was telling Brad, we hit 108 last week in Maine, which was highly irregular for us. So quick agenda of what we're going to go through today. I always welcome questions or comments as you go along, so please don't hesitate to speak up. More than happy to answer anything as we go along. So a little bit on the overview of the scope of the project. Brad, we have a lot of work that we've completed over the last four or five months in total. Really what we're looking at when we talk about software consulting and ERP consulting is four primary software products or groupings of functional areas. So we've got those identified here on the screen. ERP is really the 800-pound gorilla of all of these. That is your city financial accounting system. That is everything from how do we manage the budget? How do we hire employees and take them through the entire employee lifecycle from hire to retire, paying them, et cetera? Of course, we have utility billing and customer information system, so that's all your electric, water, wastewater billing and customer management, so a lot of really citizen-focused and customer-focused activities. Similarly, community development, permitting, code planning, talking about easements and reviewing plans and permits through a system as well. And lastly, enterprise asset management, which is asset tracking and maintenance. So anything from vertical to horizontal assets that are maintained across the city. So how do we know when it's time to replace a culvert? How long has it been there? What is the cost associated with the work orders that we're doing to maintain those assets across the city? So as we go through the scope of the project, we've completed the current environment assessment, as Brad mentioned. I'll go a little bit more into detail on some of that on an upcoming slide. Right now, we're working through the procurement phase of the project, so coming up with the procurement strategy, the request for proposal documents, really communicating the city's needs to the software vendor community of not only what's the software we need, but what services do we need to help us be successful in adopting new software? Ultimately, that's going to lead to contract finalization and moving into the deployment or the implementation of that software. So why now? Why are we doing this project? What are we hoping to achieve? Why are we putting staff through 70 meetings with consultants at the end of the day and many more hours to come? I'm not going to go through each one of these bullet points, but wanted to have them up behind me so you could sort of read through them as I speak to them. But I think really at the crux of this is we're really looking to create efficiencies for the city, but also for your citizens, your customers, and your contractors, right? We want to make sure that doing business with the city of Stillwater is easy, folks know how to do business with you, and your staff are able to spend more time focusing on value-add tasks when working with citizens or internal customers, and less time managing systems. Today, a lot of paper-based processes, disparate systems. I believe we identified 41 systems and counting that are being used across the city to manage part or all of these processes. So looking at where can we gain efficiencies by consolidating systems, adopting more modern, public-facing, and easy-to-use technology, and making sure that we're really highly responsive to the public at the end of the day. One of the great things that really stood out as we met with your staff, you have incredible staff here at the city. I mean, you have some folks that are dedicated public servants. They're doing their absolute best day in and day out. The software, in some instances, is holding people back, right? And so in all of these projects, we really look at what are some of the goals and objectives that we're looking to accomplish through this project? Because we don't want to just do a project to do a project. It's a significant amount of time. So we had a planning session with Brady and with the city leadership team to talk about what are the goals and objectives for this project? And really, one of the key takeaways for me is we're not just looking at the technology element of it, but we're looking at the process and the people and the policies that support the use of technology or the absence of technology in certain instances. So we defined some city goals and objectives to really serve as a north star for this project as a whole. So that way, as we progress through each individual decision point in the project, we're doing it through the framework of what did we set out at the beginning to achieve as objectives for this project? Before I go on, I'm a consultant, so I know I can talk a lot. Does anyone have any questions before I proceed? So a little bit more about some of the work performed. This really has been a very highly collaborative project. Just showing up here this afternoon and walking through City Hall, I've seen folks that I met with when we were here in April and folks that we've met with on a regular basis since. When we were here in April, we had a team of, I believe there were seven of us from Barry Dunn that came onsite to meet. We had 34 meetings in one week. It was a lot of meetings. We had three meetings going on at the same time. We included a picture of one of them just to show a little bit of what it looks like in a work session when you're talking about asset management for 90 minutes. But we had 78 participants across 18 departments. I think that really stands out to me. It's not as though it's just an IT project or a finance project or utilities project. It really had a broad cross-section of stakeholders that interact with processes from end to end. So a great opportunity for folks to provide input, to buy into the project as a whole, and also to communicate what their needs are for a future software system. We went through and we developed a current environment assessment report where we look to confirm what are the current processes today? What are some of those challenges related to each area? And also, what are some of the business process improvements that we could expect to gain in the future? The exercise of doing that was to gain consensus on what we're doing today, but also to create the framework for how do we develop a go-to-market strategy to solicit proposals from the software vendor marketplace? So once we confirmed that current environment assessment report in June, that's when the real fun started. And you may hear folks walking around rubbing their eyes in City Hall going, "The system has the ability to." "The system has the ability to." We've reviewed 5,000 software requirements. Each one started with, "The system has the ability to." We developed these, reviewed them with city staff, line item by line item, to assess, is it applicable to what we need to do? Is it applicable to what we want to do? Is this a growth area? And how critical is it to us in the future? So we reviewed 5,000 software requirements. Those are going to be included as part of a request for proposal package that goes to software vendors, where they can indicate their ability to address the requirements of the city. If they're not able to, how they would address otherwise. Councillor.
Can you give me an example of two or three of those 5,000 requirements you're talking about?
Oh, top of my head, I'll do the best I can. So for an example, it would be the system has the ability to create an onboarding checklist when a new hire is brought on board. So diving into that deeper, there may be sub-re requirements that say we need to issue computer equipments, badges, key cards, uniforms, et cetera. We're not saying what goes into that checklist today. That'll be made during the implementation process, but does a vendor have the ability to do that today? Whereas today, we may be relying on paper forms, a sharepoint form, et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. A lot of these also included requirements around conversion of data. We don't want to leave everything behind in an old system, right? We need to bring forward new old data, but only the best of the old data. We don't need to bring absolutely everything because that's more time, that's more cost, and it's a lot of effort for city staff and the vendor staff ultimately in the implementation. So being really selective about what information must we bring forward in a future software So we went through this process. We reviewed the current systems in place. We looked at the relative criticality, the areas of need at the city. You know, do we replace every system? Do we look at upgrading? Do we look at going out for multiple RFPs, one RFP, et cetera? Ultimately, the recommendation was made to move forward with competitive RFPs for the ERP or the procure-to-pay and hire-to-retire system. Utility billing, customer information system, as well as enterprise asset management. The existing community development system is behind on major upgrades, and so one of our recommendations was actually to explore if upgrades might allow for some reconfiguration of business processes to gain some efficiencies, given that in terms of four RFPs, you likely wouldn't want to issue all four at once. So if we have a window of time to explore, is there a possible upgrade path that may work for us for this one particular area? We have that opportunity. If ultimately it's not viable, we have the requirements developed for a new system. So at that point in time, we would develop and issue the request for proposal with really minimal effort at the end of the day. So we've worked on developing the RFP package. We've reviewed the requirements. We're working to finalize those and the requests for proposals. And intended approach would be to start out with the ERP system. That typically has the longest duration for deployment. So starting that first and then bringing in utility billing as the next one to tie into that system. Obviously, a lot of interdependencies when you talk about cash coming into the city, huge revenue source. We want to make sure that we have tight integration between utilities and the future finance system. So where does that bring us today? We're looking at finalizing the RFP here in the coming week or so for ERP as well as utility billing. And ultimately, you'd see here down in Phase Three Evaluation Selection, looking to have the RFPs issued with responses coming back in October. We want to allow vendors enough time to go through and review and develop meaningful and thoughtful responses. And then looking to take the evaluation process out likely into February between those two primary RFPs, recognizing that we have some big meetings coming up for reviewing software requirements and how the vendors are able to address those requirements. And ultimately, looking to come forward with contracts for those vendors in the March-April timeframe. Obviously, with any procurement, there's a little bit of movement on the timeline sometimes, but trying our best to hit the end of the first quarter of '26. A lot of activities coming up for this point forward, but a lot of staff input, a lot of great collaboration and participation from city staff to date. And so with that, questions and discussions?
Sure. More. So it seems to me that we don't want to just automate our old process. This is the opportunity to improve processes. And this might be a question to come back to our city manager too, but are we taking this as a chance to say, okay, why are we doing it this way? How can we improve this?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, this is not, we're proud of our current processes and, you know, some of them we are, but for sure, as a staff, we've met as a group of all the user base from our employees that were going to be involved in this process. We met, we talked through some of our high-level goals and objectives for city management, and it was to modernize our processes. I mean, start implementing best practices that we're seeing in other municipalities. Barry Dunn has brought their expertise. They've been first-rate dealing with them and their whole team, and they've been very involved in this project. They've gotten to know our staff, and our staff has definitely given, provided them a significant amount of feedback. And the reports, the data that they've been giving us has shown clearly that these new systems are going to really clean up our processes.
I'm a big fan of begin with why. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing it this way? And a lot of that happens because we have Excel spreadsheets here and paper sheets there and all that. We don't need to just automate that. We've got to integrate it.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we look at not just the technology, but the process and the policy behind it as well, because we don't want a simple lift and shift at the end of the day. We're going to, if we did that, we could come back.
Lift and shift, I like that term.
If we did that, we could come back a year later and probably identify a lot of the same challenges and areas for improvement. So it ultimately comes down to what's the problem we're trying to solve when we make decisions? And a lot of those decisions will come during the implementation, but I think already we've seen some decisions where it's, we can adopt technology to automate processes that otherwise today are cumbersome, manual, or duplicative as well.
What type of timeline for an ERP? You said it's the longest duration to deployment. What's an average timeline to get something like that implemented?
Absolutely. So at this point, the city is electing to move forward with a phased implementation, so looking at the financials as one phase and then HR payroll as a separate phase. Very common, not many agencies go forward with a full, what we call a big bang approach of doing it all at once. That's very resource-intensive. Typically, we could see anywhere from about nine to 12 months per phase, but often you're able to overlap those phases slightly. The biggest constraints obviously come in terms of finance staff with payroll, starting up at the same time as you're getting ready for go-live. So the intended approach is to state when we expect to start the project and ask vendors to recommend what their durations and timelines are. At the end of the day, if a vendor's been successful with a certain approach, phasing durations, et cetera, in the past, we don't want to deviate too much from that, right? Because all the references are going to speak to what they lived with the vendor in their approach, and the second we start deviating from that, it introduces elements of risk to the project.
And so we would have, what we have talked about is having, going out for bid for three different systems. Will all of those systems have the ability to talk with each other?
That's the intended approach, yes. There's certain elements of each system that will need to have integrate with each other. Obviously, financial's coming back from utility billing, but when you get to asset management, for example, there's a lot of benefits to tracking labor costs as well associated with that, and you're going to have project and grant accounting that needs to tie to a lot of work orders. So there's going to be interface requirements for each of those systems about what information needs to be shared and what frequency as well.
And I assume the advantage to looking at three different systems is you get systems that specialize in each of those areas versus one system that maybe isn't great across the board?
That's correct. It's the depth functionality as opposed to the breadth. Now, that doesn't mean that through the process, the city does not identify the same vendor for two or more systems, for example. There may be certain advantages to having one back to pat, one hand to shake. But at the end of the day, the recommendation was look at each individually to really look at the depth of functionality to support the nuanced needs. 15 years ago, you saw a lot of vendors that offered everything in one system, similar to what you have today, and ultimately, where does the R&amp;D money go? It goes to pockets, but not necessarily as far across. So city was really interested in that depth of functionality.
And this may actually be a question for Brady and/or Christie. Because I've worked at the university and I was part of our last implementation, I know the cost of those types of systems. Are we, I know budgets are tight. Where are we coming up with funding? How are we coming up with funding?
Well, it's a great question. We've been asking from the management side the same question. But we've identified some capital funds and reserved some, knowing that this was a kind of critical project that we wanted to implement that would have efficiencies throughout the city. And so we've identified some funds. In addition, we have utility funds. Christie can go more into it, but you know, your utility billing, some of these softwares touch a lot of our utilities, so there are some funds there. And just this last week, week and a half, Barry Dunn gave us an estimate, a high and a low for each of those systems, and they were better than we were expecting.
Good.
Yep.
If you can answer this, maybe you can't, but could you tell us two or three cities you've recently worked with?
Absolutely. Just down the road, well, down the road from me. Amarillo, Texas is one that we worked with. It's relatively, when you fly in from Maine. So Amarillo, Texas is one that we led through the process of selecting a new ERP system. They just went live in January of this year in the final phase of that, and we're working through the utility billing portion now with a planned go-live as of right now in December of this year. They don't have electric as a utility, but they have other nuanced needs that they brought to the to the table, such as fairly robust and large airport there in the city, as well as some other unique needs related to asset management to tie back into the system. In terms of some other cities that we're working with presently, a lot in California in particular-
Which one?
City of Corona, city of Almonte, city and county of Santa Cruz each, city of San Leandro, California as well. And then previously worked, I guess closer down the road with Broken Arrow.
That is closer down the road.
Yeah, quite a few years ago now, but worked with them as well. They were, they use the same legacy system as you all and very similar scope in terms of community development, asset management, utilities, and the ERP portions.
So let's talk about Broken Arrow for a second. You said it's been a few years passed. How's that gone? How much have you, how much updating have you had to do? Has it been done? Has it been successful as far as the updates?
I would have to check in, I would have to check in with the city on that, because our scope of our work was through the implementation process, and they transitioned to the vendor support after that point. So I would anticipate, since we haven't heard from them, that hopefully the updates have gone well since that time. Oftentimes, what we do is schedule a quarterly check-in for the first year or so after a client goes live to make sure that if there are updates, they're staying on top of those. One of the things that we've discussed with city management as well is looking at software as a service, as sort of a go-first strategy, so that way, all users are on the same version of the software. So vendors may still have twice-yearly updates that are delivered, turned off, and you toggle the switches for which you wish to turn on, but not like a lot of legacy systems where you could be three, four versions behind your peers on the software. So really looking to modernize the application update process as well.
So that'd be a comment for Brady and for Brad to do a follow-up on Broken Arrow. Let us know how it's going. Give us some feedback on that and updates, that sort of thing. Thanks.
Are these platforms, and we may not know this yet, but are they things that have on-premise servers or cloud-based?
Cloud-based, yeah, almost, almost unequivocally. Utility billing and asset management, there are some vendors that still offer on-premise solutions, but when you're talking ERP, it's about 99% of the market now is entirely cloud-based.
And I would be delinquent if I didn't ask about data security. That's all coming related to this also, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. So understanding if data is encrypted while it rests or in transit, understanding if they do have a hosted solution, what is the recovery time objective or the recovery point objective? If their servers go down, how quickly can they spin them back up at another location? Will they be hosting the software within the contiguous United States? Do they have staff that will be working offshore? And do they have staff that need to port into city networks and systems? All these are questions that we'll be asking. Of course, talking about appropriate, you know, HIPAA, PII considerations as well and PCI compliance.
So do the vendors that you work with find their own hosting services, or do they provide their own? How's that work?
Some of them do. Many of them have transitioned to the larger data farms, whether it's Amazon or Oracle or Microsoft Azure. So a lot of them do have outsourced to where they're doing the hosting. There are some vendors that do have their own server farms that provide more of a managed service basis for the applications. Couple vendors in the utility space allow you to choose where you do your hosting as well, giving you a little bit of flexibility in that. So if you're an Oracle shop, they'll host it out there, so it's a little bit more familiar for your organization.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I always say I make a terrible dinner conversationalist because I get to choose to talk about ERP all day, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything further, councilors? Appreciate you being here, appreciate the information, looking forward to the next steps in the project.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
I would like to get a copy of your presentation now, I don't think we got that in our packet this time.
I didn't, okay.
We definitely do that. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Item 7B, Transportation Projects Update and Presentation, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Fiscal Year 2026 Pavement Management Plan. Mr. Millis?
Why it's doing that? Thanks for your patience there. Good evening, Bill Millis, Engineering Director. Here to give you an update on transportation projects and then talk about the FY26 pavement management plan. As a reminder, the program is funded by the one-cent transportation sales tax passed in 2022. And I'll start off by mentioning some of the, not every, but some of the major projects that we've seen completed in the last year or two. Got the Block 34 off-block improvements, as well as the Third Avenue and Husband Street Bridges, Airport Park and Harnett Street Project, 12th and Duncan Drainage Culvert Project, and Seventh Avenue from Maine to Lewis. Excuse me, the next few slides are some of the currently, current projects that are under construction. This is Monticello, and you can tell there that they're working at the intersection of University and Monticello right there, and that intersection was actually open this morning. I know if you've been there recently, it's been closed for quite a while, but it was opened up this morning. There in the top right is the alignment of the entire project. The schedule is to be complete right at the end of the year, but given the weather delays, you know, the beginning of summer was pretty rainy, and this neighborhood is 100 years old, so every, there's a lot of surprises there. So making that schedule is not, is in doubt at the moment. This next one is, we call it diamond grinding, that was a key part of the rehab along Hall of Fame, Manning, and McElroy. The Hall of Fame work is all complete, you know, that was a major deadline was to get that done before the students came back. You can see there in the top left, that's the actual, right after the grinding operation to smooth the joints and improve the ride of the pavement. And that, excuse me, this should be complete in about six weeks. They'll be moving, moving lane closures for most of that time on, mostly on McElroy while they finish the joint work, resealing around manholes, things like that, then they'll come back and stripe and be finished.
So that project on McElroy was like full-depth reconstruction in some areas and then diamond grinding?
Exactly. Diamond grinding for the full, for the full length, you see there highlighted, but a lot of point repairs at different locations. Which segues into this, this is a standalone full-depth repair project, one that I really like. We try to do, kind of keep having these again and again. We'll patch small areas, and what I like is we can hit a whole lot of areas in town, make improvements in a lot of neighborhoods, but also that, you know, one patch can really improve a whole intersection or a whole stretch of street and just make a big difference with a small amount, relatively small amount of money. We have completed, I think we're on nine or 10 of about 15 that will get done in the package for this fiscal year. That one there at the top left, with a good bit of coordination, we were able to kind of dovetail that with the other Hall of Fame work, get the same contractor to do it. And if you'd been through that intersection, you know, it was in pretty rough shape, but that was real nice to be able to fit that in during the summer. This is our crack and joint sealing project. It's not complete yet, but they have finished 28 lane miles of crack and joint sealing. This photo is from Western, from 12th to 19th. You can see that right there, very apparent the before and after. And on a lot of these, especially on 19th and on Western, you know, I didn't even realize until seeing it afterwards how much we needed the crack repair. But that was a, an operation to see if you had a chance. You know, four or five vehicles and pieces of equipment in kind of a moving conveyor belt with 12 to 15 people all moving around, and it was, it was a very efficient operation when they get moving. The blue on the right shows all the roads that we're going to touch to this project. This is more of a, kind of a program rather than a project, but staff and as well as the Transportation Advisory, Transportation Project Advisory Council or Committee, excuse me, have heard from customers, you know, they want focus on trails and sidewalks. So we've been trying to do that. One thing I think you've heard about before is we developed an app on the website called Sidewalk Connect, meant for the customers to be able to bring to our attention typically gaps in the sidewalk, whether it's a gap in front of one house or a missing ramp or a whole block of sidewalk that where completion would really open up a long corridor. So the map on the left shows the 80-plus requests that we've had submitted since last fall. And that, that's a lot of work, all those 80s. Some of them, they vary from, you know, an offset joint that's a tripper to, one request was for seven miles of sidewalk, so that this person could have a good, safe running route. So we get all kinds, and we're working with public works to, to kind of triage them. And, you know, public works, some of them they can hit right away and get done quickly. A couple of them, like the top right, Fourth and Windsor, we had a customer in need of an accessible access to get around the neighborhood, but specifically to the mailbox. So that one, you know, I gave that high priority, and we were able to package it up and get quotes and get it done in a pretty timely manner. So that's a good, a good thing to be able to do. Most of these, you know, the other 78 of them, we go on a list. We talked in July, we brought before you a design contract with a consultant to start designing the first package of them, $200,000 worth of construction of essentially the low-hanging fruit. If we can, the ones that don't have too much of a grade challenge, don't need right away, aren't real long, and try to make some real difference in a number of areas around town. And then the, we'll kind of roll into the next phase of that, which we'll talk about a little farther on in the presentation.
How many of the 80 does $200,000 cover?
Not many. Do you remember?
Like five or?
Like maybe 10 or 15? Maybe five.
I mean, what does sidewalk construction cost? I mean, I know we've talked sometimes about lane mile, how much it costs to construct a road, a lane mile, a sidewalk.
I don't, I don't remember. $100 a yard, and so a square yard is-
Three feet wide.
Three feet of sidewalk.
How wide are those? Four feet?
Neighborhoods are typically four.
Yeah.
Other areas are typically six. Those trails are eight or 10, typically 10 feet wide for a trail.
So $100 for less than three feet, three linear feet of sidewalk?
Yep.
So it's not cheap.
Not cheap. And, and yeah, it's quite a bit more than it was five years ago, and we'll hear more about that as well later in the presentation.
And I'll add real quick, in addition, I know Council Hardin attends our T-PAC meetings, but the Public Works is able to knock out a handful of easy ones, you know, there's small connections or repairs, and so those, those get reported to the T-PAC committee every month.
Yep.
So at this time, I wanted to take some time to bring you up to date on, you know, you typically hear pavement management programs, that's why we're here tonight. And so I wanted to bring you up to date on the most, the last five years of pavement management programs. In 2020, calendar 2020, staff brought to you a five-year plan. Before that had been, you know, one-year plan, one at a time, and so they brought a five-year plan all at once. And these on the, on the right on the map are all the streets that were part of that program. And this is all the different techniques of pavement maintenance, some of those were total reconstruction. But that was the plan, and moving forward to FY25, about a year and a half ago, Travis Small brought the FY25 plan. And these are the projects in purple that it included. Again, multiple techniques, I'm just trying to keep it simple, so I'm just showing you all the streets that we, excuse me, had planned to touch. The list on the left there is the total reconstruction projects that we included in that plan. And then here on the next slide, bringing that together, showing you all the projects from both of those previous plans and kind of the status of them. So the green are complete, the purple are all either under construction or in design, and the red are not complete. And that's a lot more red than what I would like to see. And there are several reasons for that, and I want to kind of want to go into that. The first, which we kind of did to ourselves, which maybe you noted, we did a five-year plan in '21, and then we did another plan in '25, so we kind of doubled up on that year as far as the work we said we could get accomplished. But we've also had what I call a good number of supplemental priorities. These are things that were not on those plans, but in the five years since the first plan was adopted, through changing priorities, failing infrastructure, more just finding opportunities to do more and different work, these projects, all of them except that blue one at the bottom, are new projects that were not on that list, but that became, actually essentially moved to the top of the list. Some of, like Seventh and Lewis, Seventh was on there, but as a mill and overlay, and so the city decided that an overlay, you know, wasn't the right tool there, that needs total reconstruction. So it was a good change in plan, and we got, instead of putting a Band-Aid on it, you know, we were set up for the future there. But that's what, the doubling of construction costs, like we've talked about over the past five years, those changing priorities are a big part of why we haven't, why there's so much incomplete on that, on that last map. You know, we've heard the same thing from ODOT, the Sixth Avenue project that was scheduled for 2027 is now up to 2031. All their, all their projects are all just stretched out over twice as far now. So it takes more in-house resources as well as more construction dollars to get things done. Oh, the, the blue one down there, I added that, that's the '25 pavement management plan. I added that because the bottom half of this table is a good summary of the major projects that are in design right now. So those are the things, you know, we've talked about what's done, what's in construction. These are the things that are in design that we'll be seeing bid or go under construction in the next three to six months. I thought this would, this is representation of the expenditures from the sales tax fund that I thought would help show progress in a different way from a map. So this, this bar chart shows, I went back to FY18 because as we, when we took over this program midway through FY2023, we still had projects that were incomplete all the way back to 2018. So every, every year here had active projects. And in the last two, two and a half, almost three years now, we've, we've closed out all 2018, 2019, and 2020. '21 and '22 are nearly there, but not quite. And so we've spent a lot of effort working off the backlog of projects, something that T-PAC has also been asking for and supporting us to do that. But I think the expenditure chart shows, again, we're not where I want to be, but you can see that we're on the right track. We're getting, we're getting improvements to the transportation system spending.
In fiscal year 2018, we spent less than a million dollars on transportation projects?
I can't speak to that other than that's what the accounting archaeology tells me.
That seems-
I mean, I can't even explain, I don't know why. Yeah, it doesn't-
Seems hard to explain. But, I mean, it is, I mean, clearly, the increase in the sales tax rate when we, in 2022, means we've had more money to spend in the last couple of years, but, I mean, those numbers are still not, as I'm sure, I think I know the explanation of this, those numbers are not what we actually budgeted for transportation spending.
Well, I'm shooting from the hip right here, so I didn't prepare to answer this question, and I can confirm that, but I do know around that time period, we still had some pretty big projects budgeted in the general fund for- in the general fund for transportation. And so I would speculate that some of that spending was happening in the general fund and not with sales tax dollars.
So not out of the transportation sales tax bucket?
Yes.
Understood. But, I mean, in 2018, we collected more than 3 million in that half-cent bucket in 2018. Has that money just gotten carried forward and put somewhere else?
Yeah, it, it stays within the sales tax fund, transportation sales tax fund.
So I mean, ostensibly, if I added up all these numbers and added up all the sales tax collections for those fiscal years, the difference would be what's actually sitting in the account right now.
Yes.
Okay.
And so on the agenda item, when it talks about, we have a balance of approximately 27.5 million and we're talking about spending 10 million this year, that difference is to carry forward year over year.
Okay.
Which is also earmarked for projects from these prior years that we just haven't gotten to yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, and we're proposing a $10 million FY '26 plan, but we're also spending other projects, kind of same what you said, from, from the available balance.
Okay.
And working off the backlog.
So, well, so really what this shows at some level is just an increase in activity, right? Having more projects out there because, I mean, when we're spending more money, it's because we've got more projects actually happening.
Right.
Than, than we had in the past, which is good because, I mean, it's, I know it's difficult from our staff perspective, I mean, there's only so many of these things we can be doing at any one time, right? We can't just put every road under construction that needs to be under construction. I mean, even if we have money budgeted for it, we have to have people to design, we have to have people supervise it, you know, I mean, we can't just throw everything out to bid at once.
And we can design, drive on some of the roads too.
Yeah, well, that's, it's less of a concern, right?
Even if they are rough, we need to drive on.
And that's, that's one thing we've probably talked about in other contexts, but that, with the staffing challenges and with, you know, doubling the revenue without doubling staffing, we've changed the way we're doing things. And we've got consultants doing more of the work, providing more of the services to the life of the project, packaging projects, that's the, that FY '25 pavement management plan went to one consultant. Whereas normally, you know, the, the kind of the historic way of doing things is, is to, you know, that was, could have been three, could have been eight projects to have three or eight consultants.
Yeah.
Now we've got one, working on one program. So we're trying to be, we're setting up more efficient processes to get more work done.
That's great because, I mean, we, we did go to voters and said, give us more money for transportation. And the only way we're going to be able to actually provide more transportation projects is if, if we figure out how to get that money deployed to these projects. And so seeing that chart actually, you know, to me, just means that we have figured out ways to deploy more money, you know, at any given time so that we can get these projects going.
Yes, we're making progress there and we plan to make more.
That's great. Thank you.
And I, if I can just for one second brag on staff, he highlighted it for a second, but it didn't go into the detail that I think it deserves. So we meet monthly with T-PAC and it's a great group of five citizens that are tough on us and they're ready, they want to see progress. And, and it's been, it's a really good relationship. We have them every month, they see our financials, they see our budget, they see, and a couple of years ago, it was very complicated. I mean, it was a detailed list of a lot of hanging projects from 2018. And recently, the last few months, Councilor Harden can, can vouch for this, but they've been very grateful for staff's work, how they've cleaned up all these old projects and really started to move forward on these new pavement management plans. And the, like you said, Mayor, the 10 million was given to the consultants last year and said, go, go spend it on, you know, we let T-PAC set these priorities and then we say, consultants, go spend it. So it's, it's, we now have a good program moving forward. Go ahead.
Let me, let me give T-PAC some credit for that too. They, every month, they've been saying, okay, what projects are out there? What's priority? And when I first started going to T-PAC a year or so ago, there wasn't a really good list of what's working, where's all the money gone? And now that, every month, there is a list of, here's the projects, here's where they stand. And I had written down here, I was going to mention, T-PAC has held their feet to the fire trying to get this going and they've done a good job.
They have.
I think they've done a really good job.
So we've talked about how, this again is that same map with the projects that were incomplete off the previous two pavement management plans. And we've talked about how things were significantly prioritized. And so our plan here is with, considering these were set five years ago, using the data, you know, there on the left, I've mentioned that, you know, we have a five-year cycle with pavement condition survey, where we drive every mile of street, there's radar and video, there's actually a weight to test the deflection of the roads. But so all these old ones were set, priorities were set based on the 2017 data. Whereas now we're setting priorities based on 2022 data. And considering the price changes that we've gone through, that some of these roads may have deteriorated where a mill and overlay was the right tool in '21. Whereas now they may be worse and it may need total reconstruction. Some of these roads, where other roads may have leapfrogged over them. If they get a lot more traffic, they may have gotten worse in the meantime. So my plan here is to take all these and essentially put them back in the priority list with everything else and assess them on the new data, the new criteria. You know, it's a pavement condition index and it's a, it's a computer model based on data and based on the needs of the roads and what the, what the appropriate treatment is for that road. So that's what I'm planning to do with that, is to put all that back into, and let us prioritize on a level field rather than paying too much attention to what was a priority six years ago.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that pavement condition index is developed by this firm driving every block of every street in the city, right?
Yes, sir.
And then come up with, this is really bad, this is not so bad, this is pretty good, and this is great. They rate them off by block, is it?
Yes, street segment, which is essentially block by block. And that, that data, it's not plug and play. It takes a lot of work because, you know, one block is better than the next. And how you evaluate, sometimes the appearance of a problem is, there's two things that can look similar or not similar if the subgrade is bad. So it takes a lot of judgment to turn that into a real plan. But it is, it's an assessment of every block of street, 200 and, I think we have about 210 lane miles of the street.
And then you match that up with how much traffic is on those streets too, correct?
Yes, traffic, condition, subgrade if we know it. You know, they don't do the, the, it's called a falling weight, but they don't do that stress test on every piece of road because that's a very expensive test. So sometimes you have to evaluate if we know what the condition of the subgrade is.
I think it's always good to know that we do these types of assessments because I'm sure all of us have people that say, when are y'all going to get to X street? It's the worst in the city and we can always say. We do an assessment of the entire city and we know, we know which streets are the worst and those are the ones we're focusing on. So I think it's great that we have this assessment, that we can provide that response to people.
Yes, it helps that and helps us make better decisions. So it's a great, a great tool to have. Going to transition now to the FY '26 pavement management plan. This slide provides an overview, see it totaling to 10 million. And then the next few slides will break down some of this. Of the items on this sheet, sidewalks at the top is what we talked about earlier. We're proposing 1 million in construction for sidewalks, you know, working down that list. That, the design contract we have was set up for the designer to design the first, or to package the first set and then roll right into this, this next portion. Pedestrian corridor, this would be for design only. We're working on a conceptual plan or a wide trail pedestrian and, and bike connection from downtown to campus. And so this would allow that conceptual planning to continue into design. And then at a future year, go for construction. Full depth repair, self-explanatory, we've talked about that. These are, this is a great project that I like being able to do, you know, essentially every year. And the next three we'll, we'll go into in a little more detail. This is the various pavement maintenance techniques. And these are just kind of categories. There's multiple different types of seal coating, of, of micro-surfacing or overlays or mill and overlays. And we'll apply, the techniques are also predicted by that computer model. Besides just telling you how bad is this street, it can tell you in this range, it suggests that a, that a micro-surface is the right tool or know that it's too late for that, you should do a mill and overlay. Or know that it's too late for that, you just need a total reconstruction. This is the full reconstruction projects. This breakdown includes the streets named and the cost estimate. You'll notice also there in parentheses is the average PCI. We've got a 30, a 20, and a 30. And then.
That's out of 100.
Out of 100, yes. The engineering term for these is awful.
Yeah.
And here they are in a map, easier to, to envision. Most notable thing here, 26th, you can see that's a mile and a half, I think. So that's going to be very expensive. So I've not included full construction because we had to cut, cut the budget to get down to 10 million. So this plan would only include design of that section for 26th Avenue.
10th from Lewis to Lowry is bad. 10th is bad from Lowry to Husband. Are those, I mean, those other segments I assume are farther down the list?
They were farther down the list. I think they may actually have been, only going by memory, so don't hold me too, in a mill and overlay recommendation, which would put them farther down the list. Because even when we're, when you're making the list, you got to decide, how much do we put into, what do you think of as maintenance, overlays, seal coats, full depth repair? And how much do you put into total reconstruction? Because if we just start at the bottom of the list with total reconstructions, we will never catch up. We will just get farther behind. So you really want to spend, you know, if you look at the numbers, we have 20% of the budget on total reconstruction and the other 80% on other things. And that's, so yeah, so we just, we just have to select a very few at the bottom for, for total reconstruction. And this is the, the maintenance capital breakdown, that we use that term, maintenance capital, still capital expenditures, but much, much more than normal maintenance, but they can be performed kind of in a, in a maintenance setting, sometimes by Public Works Department rather than engineering. These first three are either upgrades or replacements of, of a signal equipment that's past its prime, past its useful life and, or, or yeah, or an upgrade to a signalized intersection. The last two are what I call enhancements to the public resource, Public Works Department resources and ability to accomplish work. Those could include materials, equipment, or contracts for contractors to do some of those pavement improvements or roadway striping. There could also, roadway striping, just like crack and joint seal could be included in the pavement treatments that we talked about earlier. At this point, I brought us back to the, the overview to kind of stop there and see if we have questions.
This was the plan that was approved by T-PAC?
Yes, sorry, this is, this is the same overview we looked at just a few minutes ago, approved by T-PAC or recommended to Council for approval. And the, what we'd be looking for is approval of the plan. All the individual award of contracts and authorization of expenditures would come later with specific projects.
Is that a recommendation?
I can.
Are we there?
I was just pausing for questions, I go straight to the recommendation. Staff recommends a motion to approve the FY '26 pavement management plan as presented.
Counselors, bring your question. Go ahead.
Motion recommends, motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation, please vote. Vote a 5 to 0, that is approved. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Just, I mean, as we've kind of said, as we've asked these questions, this is a very complicated subject. There's tons and tons of miles of road out there that needs fixed at some level and putting all those pieces together is a lot of work. And we appreciate you and your staff for trying to figure out what the best, most efficient, most cost-effective way to get all this stuff done is. So thank you.
I have one quick anecdote that, and I'd like to throw in there. We never hear about things they've done right in the streets. It's always, when are you going to get to something? I actually got to thank you the other day for finally fixing Duck and Hall of Fame. So my counsel said, it's great, thank you so much.
All right, that takes us to item 8, Resolutions. 8A is Resolution Number CC-2025-21, a resolution of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, approving action taken by the Stillwater Utilities Authority, authorizing issue and sale and delivery of a promissory note of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board ratifying and confirming an amended lease agreement binding between the city and the authority pertaining to certain water sanitary sewer solid waste disposal and electric systems, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement binding between the authority and the city pertaining to a pledge of certain sales tax revenues and containing other provisions related thereto.
The city's bond council and municipal financial advisor are here to introduce this resolution as well as a couple of resolutions that will be for consideration during the SUA meeting. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris Gander.
Chris Gander with BOK Security and Nate Ellis. With Public Finance Law Group. So I guess to start, probably a good place to start, a little history. As you all know, you've had a lot of large water sewer infrastructures kind of coming down the, the pipe. And so through that, in 2023, you all had done a rate structure, a rate study, had some different town hall meetings, and through that, you all implemented a five-year rate plan. This basically is part of those, those improvements that need to be done, specifically the raw water line from Mercury Lake. The, the financing is the FAP loan program to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, that's what we're talking about approving tonight. You haven't used the FAP program in the recent past, probably 20-plus years. You've used the SRF program. And so one of the things that we've, we've looked at is whether you do a standalone bond issue. Is it? Sure, sure, sure. And I was going to, I'm going to circle back around to that actually, but you can go out and do a bond issue on your own or you could do a bank placement. Some of this stuff we talked about when you all did the refundings, right? So just in the sense of the size, the term, in the sense it's going to be a 30-year financing bank note didn't make sense. You could do your own bond issue, which is, you have a double A minus rating, or the OWRB has various programs. And so you have the state revolving funds, which is, money has some federal dollars tied to it. So you have the DW, which is the drinking water state revolving fund, and then the clean water, CWS, R F fund, and then the FAP program. So the FAP program is what's considered their bond program. So they go out and issue bonds specifically for a community as they need money. And they have a triple A rating and then they add an admin fee onto that, whatever that bond rate is they get. Not, not the bond rating, but the interest rate you're going to pay. And so as you, as you go through this, multiple communities will come together, generally one community that has some size, which Stillwater would be the one that has size in this matter, would say, okay, we need money at a certain time. They start working through the process. Other communities will kind of come in and then the, the bond issues sold as one large issue. So example here, you're talking 100-plus million dollars. And so we were in Durant last week and they're doing about 45 million. There's another rural water district I know is doing about 15 million. So you're already at 160 million and I'm sure there'll be other communities that join in. So this would be the second FAP program that's been done at the Water Board this year. And, you know, it, it looks like it would be approaching about $200 million total. Let me see, I had some notes here. I guess the other thing with the FAP program is you have, you know, pre-pavement provisions. One of the things is that's gotten shorter over time in the sense that normally we've, we've got that down to seven, eight-year call. I mean, that's, that's not finalized until the bonds are actually. I mean, that's, that's not finalized until the bonds are actually sold. So just like if you're doing your own bond issue, the underwriter sells the bonds. They, they go out and market those to whether it's State Farm, BlackRock, or mom and pop that wants to buy 20,000 bonds. But they go through that process, figure out what the rate is. Some, some of the communities may only be borrowing for 10 years. Some communities may be borrowing for 30 years, like, like Stillwater. And then that, that, that allocable part gets applied to your loan through the Water Board. But that's, that's the, in a nutshell, the financing that we're talking about tonight.
So from our perspective, it's a loan.
Yes.
And the Water Resources Board goes out and sells bonds to, to come up with the money to loan us. But we're, we're just entering a loan agreement with-
It, it is, but there, in the sense that some of the nuances as it relates to the FAP, as in when I talk about that call date. That means you all can call those bonds after you get to that call date. Whereas with the SRF, they basically decide when they want to refinance those. And at that point, they may say, the economics of it, they may split it 50/50. Say, well, we're going to keep 50% of the money. Or we're alternatively here, it's, it's, you have a call date on that.
Did I hear you say the, the length of this would be 30 years?
That is correct. And, and there's, there's more in the sense of the SRS are drawdown loans. I mean, this is an important point, too, because on the SRS, they are a drawdown. Where this is, you get all the money at closing. So just like your other bond issue, which the significance there is it's going to drop into an account for you, an escrow account, so to speak. And you'll do payment draws like you would with your state revolving fund loans that you've done in the past. But the funds are invested for you. So you know, Christie would help coordinate with the trustee. You'd probably, you know, buy treasuries. I mean, it's only allowable, you know, secure investments, but treasuries generally, or a treasury-type money market.
And so drop it into the stock market.
Right, no cryptocurrencies. But the, the sense is, you know, you, you're borrowing at 5%. Hopefully, you can turn around and invest it at some rate as close to that as you can. Probably, I'm just saying, 4% on a treasury right now. So you're still 1% kind of in the hole as you're working your way, way through spending the money down.
And what, and this may be a question for Christie, but what would our annual debt payments be on this?
Until we have the interest rate, we won't know the final, but around 7.2 is the number we had thrown out there.
So annual, annual ballpark issue.
Yeah.
Which is calculated, I mean, what we've done is we've looked at our rate structure and decided what can we afford to pay based on the rates we're going to be collecting.
Right, the, right. And I mean, I wasn't involved in the, the rate study, so I don't want to, but, but yes, I mean, ultimately, that was the intent. I mean, I knew these projects were coming, and so the rates were structured. Anticipation of this and other projects were coming, so, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, just, this isn't for you, but, but for the public. These are projects that we've had identified for several years at this point in terms of water infrastructure, our, you know, our call pipeline and the redundancy to, to McMurtry and all that sort of thing. And we did, we, when we talked about the rate study, we went through and said we were going to have to set rates at these, at these levels in order to, if we can't find grant funding, if things like the federal government decides to completely pull grants that we worked on for two years. You know, when that kind of stuff happens, we have to fall back on rates to, to borrow money. And that's what we're doing in, in this program.
Yeah, and that's why I was trying to emphasize when we started, because I mean, the sense of you, there was quite a bit of lead time up to the 2023 rate study. And now we're at the end of 2025, and we're really just getting to some of these bigger projects. So yeah, many, many years in, in the works.
How much, I, I know we have gotten some grants and some federal funding for our water projects. But in, in addition to those, and with this somewhat large loan, how close does this get us to all the things we need to be doing out at the water treatment plant?
Bill thought he was done.
I mean, is it the tip of the iceberg or does it get us significantly down the road on the things we need to do?
Bill can correct. I think when we did the rate study in '23, didn't we identify on the 10-year capital project list for water? It was over 500 million?
It was, yeah. Water and sewer combined was about 600 million, and water, I think, was 500 of that. But that was included in the CIP for a 10-year plan, of which five years was adopted, of, of rate increases to provide revenue to do the capital program. And this is, this is the first part of that.
This is one piece of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
So does doing this preclude us from being able to apply for future grants? Will they say, you've already got the money, you don't need it?
So for these particular projects that will be pursued under this funding source, we would not seek grants for that.
Okay.
Well, we got lots of other projects to ask for.
We have plenty of other projects, yes. Shelley will stay busy.
But that's, so we're, we're looking for authorizations and move forward with the financing.
So this, I mean, we haven't really spelled it out, but this resolution authorizes the borrowing of 112 million, $905,000 under this issuance of this note for a 30-year term.
That is correct.
All right. Counselors, questions now? So this resolution is the city council approving the Stillwater Utilities Authority, also issuing a resolution that we're going to see in a second?
Yes, this would approve, authorize, and ratify action taken by SUA later on the agenda. The authority is actually who's going to issue the note.
Yes.
Yep.
But we can go ahead and approve this one first. Pending approval of the second one.
That's correct.
Okay. Counselors, further questions, comments, or action on the resolution?
Go ahead.
Adoption of resolution CC-2025-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Item B is resolution CC-2025-22, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council, authorizing, approving, and ratifying the grant application for fiscal year 2025 Airport Improvement Program discretionary funds administered by the Federal Aviation Administration for airport infrastructure improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport as submitted on July 8, 2025.
So city council previously approved resolution number CC-2025-13. That authorized the submission of an FAA grant application for airport improvement projects, specifically the passenger boarding bridge. During the submission process, the airport's consultant realized that the numbers needed to be adjusted slightly so that they would be correct on the grant submitted. The total project costs increased roughly about $69,000. However, the FAA eligible grant funds also increased, and the city's required match decreased to $3,457. In order to ensure timely submission of the grant and to avoid any delay on the projects, that a correct grant application was submitted. And I've recommended approval of this resolution as necessary to authorize, approve, and ratify the grant application that was actually submitted.
Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2025-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item nine is ordinances. On first read, ordinance 3578, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 624 West 22nd Avenue from small lot, single-family residential and agriculture to agriculture. This is from our earlier item this evening.
Move to advance ordinance 3578.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3578 is advanced to second reading. Item B is ordinance 3579, an ordinance closing a portion of a general utility easement located at 707 East Airport Road, also from earlier tonight.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3579.
Second.
A motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. Vote of five to zero, ordinance 3579 is advanced to second reading. Item 10 is appointments. We have one appointment to make to the audit committee. We had an application from Skylar Rodenberg, who is qualified to serve on the audit committee. I will, I will nominate Skylar for a seat on, a first term on the audit committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Skylar Rodenberg to vacancy on the audit committee with a term expiring in January of 2027. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. Certainly appreciate the willingness to serve on the audit committee. Very important role here in the city. Reports from the officers in the board. Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, I just want to send a congratulations to the Stillwater Animal Welfare Staff and volunteers for achieving a no-kill status in 2024, and that's with a 90%, exceeding a 90% save rate. So this milestone reflects a true culture of caring and compassion. It represents the dedication of our staff, the commitment of volunteers, and the support of our community, and the strength of partnerships with animal rescue and welfare networks. The new animal welfare bond, as you know, has been added to the city's projects page. And so you can go to visit Stillwater, or sorry, you can visit stillwaterok.gov/projects for updates on planning and construction. And so I know that we are moving forward with that project, and it's going to be exciting to see a new ribbon cutting in the future. Or groundbreaking first. Vice Mayor?
The deadline is almost here. Submit your entry for the Utility Box Art Contest by Tuesday, September 2nd. This year's theme is Stillwater Strong and celebrates the resilience, creativity, and spirit of our community. Enter online at stillwaterart.org or drop off your artwork at Still, at the Stillwater Community Center. Don't make, don't miss your chance to make your mark. I also just want to add, along the lines, along the lines of Stillwater Strong, to just update the community on some of the federal funds that have come into our community since the wildfires. FEMA, we were granted, after the mayor declared an emergency disaster in the state, we were granted a federal disaster. We've had over 169 families in our community apply for FEMA funds. And to date, we have $733,000 that have been dispersed through FEMA. We also have had the opportunity to work with the Small Business Administration, which is providing low-interest loans to families that are rebuilding or repurchasing homes. We've had 29 families in Payne County apply for SBA loans, and over four point, almost $4.2 million of SBA dollars have been deployed in Payne County. I also wanted to let people know that through that FEMA designation, that we have been granted case management through Catholic Charities. So Catholic Charities is available if you are still struggling with unmet needs in our community. Throughout Payne County, you have access to a case manager that can help you navigate FEMA, SBA, just identifying where you can find additional dollars or additional support, whether that's dollars or just counseling support and things like that as you navigate this disaster. There is a woman, her name is Mary Lynn Lufkin. And you can contact her at Catholic Charities at M.Lufkin, L-U-F-K-I-N, at cceok.org. And then just finally, after the wildfires, our community came together in a really big way and donated over $563,000. There's been a Stillwater Strong Relief Task Force that's been working to get those dollars deployed. And I'm happy to say that we've had 80 Payne County households that have applied for those funds, and they are already starting to be just deployed.
That's great. That's fantastic. Thank you for the update, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for your leadership in helping to coordinate a lot of that, working with a lot of these agencies, helping make sure we're getting the word out about, about the opportunities here. So thank you so much for the, the work that you've done on that. Counselor Hawkins?
Cowboy football is almost here. If you are looking for an easier way to park on game day, check out the free Park and Ride Shuttle Service. The City of Stillwater, OSU Athletics, and Visit Stillwater team, team up each season to make your experience simple and stress-free with free parking shuttles and a complimentary game day guide. Shut offs, shut, shut offs. Shuttles run every 30 minutes, starting three hours before kickoff. Pickup and drop-off is at 7th and Lewis. And full game day details are at visitstillwater.org. Park with ease, grab a bite to eat or drink downtown, then head for the game to, and be ready to cheer. And not go Cowboys, go Pokes.
Counselor Clark?
The 2025 Payne County Free Fair is right around the corner, the week of August 25th, which is a week from today. City staff from many departments, I said May, it was not May, it's August. City staff from many departments, including emergency management, fire, waste management, communications, public works, human resources, police, engineering, and more, will be in the community building throughout the week. Be sure to stop by, ask your questions, and share your thoughts.
It's hard to believe it's fair time. Counselor Harden?
Yeah, two things. First of all, Block 34 is becoming Stillwater's go-to spot for community fun. From concerts and yoga in the park to round net tryouts, which is also known as Spike Ball, and more. There's always something happening. That's a new one to me. And don't miss Market 34, your Saturday morning destination. Join us downtown for local vendors, handmade goods, food trucks, live music, all-in-one vibrant community space. So stay in the loop by following us on Facebook and visiting block34.org for the latest event details. Second thing, city manager, mayor, and I had a chance to visit the Google Data Center in Pryor this last week and for their big announcement of community investments. And the thing that we commented on when we got out of the car was the absence of noise. I don't know about you, but I've heard a lot of people say that they were not happy about data centers coming to their community because they were so noisy. And the noise that I hear in here from the air conditioning is more than the noise we heard at the data center over there. So all I can say is, I'm going to back up. I mentioned that to two or three friends. They said, did they shut it down while you were there? No, you don't shut down a data center. I was truly amazed at the absence of noise. I think you guys also were. So anyway, that was good news. Thanks.
Yeah. That was a good event. That was part of, you know, the, the data center here in Stillwater that Google's building is part of $9 billion in total investment that Google's making in the state, including expansions in their prior facility, but also a whole lot of money going towards training programs for electricians, job, job skills training, making those, those are jobs of the future. We need folks who are trained well in, in, in those skill sets. And so Google is investing in that as well through our technical schooling programs here in, in the state as well. So it was, it was a good event. I will also add, congratulations to the City of Stillwater's Finance Department for earning the nation's highest honor in governmental accounting and financial reporting for the 43rd year in a row. This prestigious award from the Government Finance Officers Association reflects our finance team's exceptional, exceptional professionalism and dedication to transparency. It demonstrates the city's longstanding commitment to being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars and maintaining the community's trust. We're proud of our finance department for continuing this remarkable legacy of excellence. And you're doing all that with way outdated computer systems, so I mean, that's, that's exciting. I can't, but what can you win with better systems? You can't even, you know, you're just going to keep winning the same award. Are there, there more awards we can put? That's great. We appreciate that. Okay. We'll look for those in the future. Any further comments from the council staff? Is there a motion to adjourn city council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. This time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for August 18th, 2025. Trustees, actions on the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. Please vote. We vote a five to zero. The consent docket is approved. Item five, general orders, waste management discussion for downtown improvement plan. Mr. Faulkner?
Justees, Matt Faulkner, Waste Management Director. Going to dive into the exciting world of solid waste collection, specifically in the downtown area.
ERP systems, solid waste management. This is a, this is an exciting meeting.
It, it may not be as glamorous as a new ERP system, but fascinating nonetheless.
We're all on the edge of our seats.
Oh, yes. So a little brief introduction of what this downtown waste management plan is. So waste management has developed an improvement plan for the downtown corridor between 6th Avenue and 10th Avenue, Husband to Lewis. The proposed plan is to enhance the quality- the quality of service and appearance within the alleys of the designated corridor. City staff held two meetings with Downtown Merchants Association to discuss the program and to hear feedback. That presentation included an alley-by-alley breakdown. I am not going to put you through that. It is a forty-five to an hour-long presentation. We're not going to do that. However, if you would like to see that, I would be more than happy to provide that for you, or any downtown merchants that might be hearing that tonight would like to go over that, I'd be more than happy to go over that with them.
It's nice to know it's there.
It's there. It's there for you. Really, yes, very much. A few things we'll go through during this discussion. We're gonna go through some of the issues that customers and Waste Management staff have in this area. We'll go over the data that we used for the improvement plan area, and then finally, I will tell you the improvement plan. And then we'll have time for questions. So here in front of us, we have a few of the issues in the downtown area. Dumpster assignments are a problem. So due to the high number of dumpsters in the area, and that a portion of these dumpsters are shared by multiple customers, it is difficult for customers and even staff sometimes to know who is assigned to what dumpster. This confusion can lead to customers having questions about their billing and occasional arguments among customers, so it can be a problem. Waste Man, we currently, Waste Management go out and we audit this area frequently, at least every other month. However, when we're trying to make sure proper services are rendered, we end up having to change dumpster assignments. That, you know, furthers that confusion. Another issue that we have down there are the number of dumpsters. So although there is limited space in these alleys, there, in some of these alleys, there are quite a few dumpsters. In one section in particular, we have seventeen dumpsters, and as soon as you enter the alley, there's a dumpster, and it's just a line until you get through there. That causes problems for delivery trucks for the businesses downtown, our Waste Management staff getting through there in our trash trucks, and just anybody who may travel down that alley. The next issue, and this is a big one, even though it may not seem like it, for that specific area, the impact of one-day-a-week service is pretty bad there. So although there are a lot of dumpsters, seventy-one in total in this corridor, over half of them are only serviced one day a week. And that's a problem because we run into the issues of smell, overloaded dumpsters. The wind comes through here, because we live in Oklahoma, and that litter goes everywhere, and we're only there once a week. So if we get to a dumpster on Wednesday, we clean up around it, or the customers may have cleaned up around it, and then by Wednesday night, that dumpster's over full again. It's a week before we're there, and that can be a problem.
Is that one-day-a-week service a choice that the customer makes?
It can be, or it can just be determined by how many customers currently share that dumpster. But that's the choice it is right now. It's a choice. Now, these other two issues, there's not necessarily anything affecting that we can do a whole lot about, but illegal dumpster usage is also a problem in this area. It's a problem in any area where dumpsters have public access, but with this specific situation, the number of dumpsters, it kind of creates an inviting opportunity for people to come down and dump for free. So that's a problem. Top that onto the one-day-a-week service, it really becomes an issue. The next issue, we kind of scratched our head for an actual good definition for this, but dumpster divers are a really bad issue down there. It's bad kind of everywhere, but once again, sheer volume of dumpsters down there, the frequency of our dumping kind of allows for people to just kind of pick through these dumpsters, which means we have to clean it up when we get there, or the customers have to clean it up when we get there, and once again, litter up and down the alley. So those are a lot of the reasons why we've developed this downtown plan. Right here, these are kind of the numbers of the area. Once again, this is Sixth Avenue to Tenth Avenue from Husband Street to Lewis, and this is the alleys within that corridor. So currently, we have one hundred and eighteen customers paying for service in that alley, those alleys. We have seventy-one dumpsters in the alleys, and we currently service two hundred and ninety-two cubic yards of waste each week in that alley. We also service eighteen cardboard dumpsters in that alley, and we don't have a whole lot more in this discussion about recycling or the cardboard dumpsters, but I do want to touch on that part of the improvement plan does involve that. So as part of the plan, Waste Management will be replacing the current cardboard dumpsters in the alley. We'll be putting new dumpsters that look very similar to our residential carts, so they will be blue dumpsters, yellow lids. These yellow lids will be locked, and only Waste Management will have access to open the full lid. However, the lids will have a slotted top so cardboard can be broken down and placed in there. Everybody in the downtown area will be able to use those dumpsters for cardboard. They just won't be able to open the tops of them, which we've kind of had a problem with that with the old system, but we want to update that. And then probably spread them out where they're a lot more accessible to everybody in the downtown area.
How many yards in a dumpster?
In this particular corridor, we can only put two-yard dumpsters in the corridor. So we have two four-yards, were built recently that are there, but for the most part, it's just two-yards dumpsters. So using the customer and observational data that we've been evaluating for the system, we were able to classify the customers in the corridor into two classes, so a low-volume and a high-volume customer. The downtown dumpster improvement plan is designed for the low-volume customer. They are the customers that see the most impact of the issues we get downtown. You can kind of see here by the numbers, it's a hundred and five customers, and they're all utilizing fifty-one of the seventy-one dumpsters that are down there, and these fifty-one are only dumped once or twice a week, maybe. I can actually tell you that thirty-five are dumped once a week, fourteen are dumped twice a week, and two are dumped three weeks, but three times a week, but multiple people share them, six people, so not very many. And they get collected a hundred and thirty-four cubic yards weekly. I'll touch on the high volume, just so you know. We only have thirteen high-volume customers down there. They utilize twenty dumpsters together, and it's a hundred and fifty-eight cubic yards. So these thirteen customers with twenty dumpsters are far exceeding just the low-volume customers.
Without naming names, can you characterize maybe the kinds of businesses that are higher volume?
Absolutely. So that, think of restaurant hospitality. So that's the best classification for that.
That's what I would have guessed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And those customers know their dumpster. I mean, they walk out that, and they can pinpoint their dumpster. They know, they know what days a week they get taken care of, and they very well know. But for the plan, they are excluded, and this just impacts the low-volume customers. All right. Finally, the exciting part, what is the plan? So first, as part of the plan, we will combine all low-volume customers into a downtown shared dumpster. These dumpsters will be labeled and usable by all low-volume customers. This should help reduce the dumpster assignment confusion, as they'll just be able to go out and know they can utilize this dumpster, if it may be full. Another one that's labeled will be more than acceptable. Any billing questions they may have, those will kind of disappear as well. Next thing, we will remove the current low-volume dumpsters and replace them with the labeled dumpsters. Those dumpsters will be serviced, the new dumpsters, will be serviced three times a week, so we'll increase the, this will increase the frequency of dumping and the volume that we're currently dumping for these customers. That increase in frequency and yardage collected will actually be an enhancement to the current services that they have. So we'll be there more often to clean up around dumpsters, to dump dumpsters, empty them, reduce the impacts of smell and overloading, so it'll be a quality enhancement for their service. And hopefully, the reduced accumulation may keep out the dumpster divers. Next, Waste Manage will continue their commitment to cleanliness before and after service. It is already part of our standard operating procedure to clean around dumpster areas, particularly public-access dumpsters like these. What that basically means is when we get to a dumpster, we clean up around it, we clean up any mess that we may leave during the dumping process, close lids, put them back where they belong. This also includes the continued observation that we do in this downtown area by Waste Management staff to keep an eye on billing if we need to make adjustments in the future. So the proposed amount of dumpsters may work now, but as businesses come and go, we may have to alter that. And then lastly, customers that are low-volume customers will have a single fee. A single fee will be implemented for that, this classification of users. Right now, the fees vary all over the place for these users. It'll just be one fee that everybody has to pay that's the same. This is a look at that same information, kind of by the numbers. As you can see, we currently have a hundred and fifty-one dumpsters down there. We would replace those fifty-one with thirty. The current cubic yardage is a hundred and thirty-four cubic yards collected a week. This would increase to a hundred and eighty cubic yards, or forty-six cubic yards a week, and would hopefully take care of a lot of those problems that we're seeing down there. If you look down at the bottom, there is a proposed customer fee for this particular service.
That's a monthly fee?
This would be a monthly fee, that's correct. This fee is not for a recommendation here tonight. It will be brought back when we do a later full-blown Waste Management fee. But I wanted to give you that example.
How does that compare to their current?
It varies depending on the rate they're paying now. It could be a little higher, it could be a little lower, but they are getting an enhanced version of service. All right. Any questions?
Justees? How will this be affect, I was just thinking, we've talked about front-load dumpsters in the future.
That's a great question. So this area is a restricted access area. Front-load dumpsters are gonna be incredibly difficult in this area, if maybe impossible. So this improvement plan, because we may not be able to do something like that, this improvement plan would still increase the quality of service, where we might not be able to do that with the front-load service.
On the rates that you showed us, I know you said some people will pay a little more, some people will pay a little less. In terms of projected revenue, is it a hold harmless kind of thing from a revenue perspective, or do we make a little, or do we lose a little?
So that's a great question. So these rates, they're kind of, we put these together, kind of utilizing the rate package that we've got from our NewGen Strategies who did our rate study. And this is basic, these rates are across the board for what, what thirty-two-yard dumpster serviced three days a week divided by the current customer. So we would be about breaking even right where we would need to be.
Thank you. Is there, like, a mapped area that this plan covers? So like, if a new business is coming online, will we, how do we know, or how do they know?
Yeah, so the cor, yeah, when they would come into that corridor between Sixth and Tenth Avenue, between Husband and Lewis, you're automatically going to have that service in the alley. There's nowhere else to put you. So working with utilities and billing, we've worked with them a little on this. They'll know to introduce that, because there may be customers that come in that are outside of this shared classification. They may be a larger customer, it might be one of those restaurant or hospitality businesses, so they, they'll have their own set on.
So they still stay with their own, they've got their own dumpster, and they get dumped however often that they?
Correct. Nothing will change for them at all. We are going to label their dumpsters, so there's no confusion, so.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, if they know it's a shared dumpster, it's a shared dumpster, but if it's a dumpster in that specific corridor, it will be labeled, so they'll all know.
So there'll be some sort of discussion. So if a new business is coming in, they're coming, need dumpster service, there'd be a discussion about whether they would be a hot, high-volume?
Correct.
Or one of these low-volume users in that certain corridor?
Correct. And those discussions normally happen outside, whenever any kind of commercial business comes in. What type of trash are you generating? What are your expected volumes? So if it was an office building, for instance, it might be lower volumes. It'd be pretty easy to classify.
How, going from fifty-one down to thirty, how far does somebody have to walk to empty their trash?
It's a good question. So we will be able to evenly distribute these out, where you shouldn't have much more to walk than you do now. If, don't want to go into the alley-by-alley breakdown, you can really see, they're not too far away now. It sounds like a dramatic amount, but for instance, we use the alley that has seventeen current dumpsters in it. Fifteen of those dumpsters are dumpsters that would be removed, and we'll add nine. So we're gonna go from fifteen to nine, but we'll be able to space those out. So think where they're at now and just remove every other dumpster.
I seem to recall seeing some dumpsters that are not Stillwater dumpsters in the area, too. Is Republic or somebody else?
Not anymore. They're currently in this corridor, we're their only service provider.
Okay.
That's been recent, so.
I think it's great that you guys have gone through and done this, this kind of analysis to try to figure out how to provide a better service, to clean up downtown, to have, you know, just be a more, you know, efficient and a better service for our, for our community. So it's, it's great that you've been able to identify these improvements, and excited about it.
Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Item six, Resolution 6A, Resolution SUA 2025-5, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Waters Resources Board, Oklahoma Water Resources Board, in the total aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve million nine hundred and five thousand dollars, approving the issuance of a promissory note in the total aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve million nine hundred and five thousand dollars, secured by a pledge of revenues and authorizing its execution, designating a local trustee, approving and authorizing the execution of a series of 2025B supplemental note indenture, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement, ratifying and confirming an amended lease agreement by and between the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, the city, and borrower pertaining to certain water, sanitary sewer, solid waste disposal, and electric systems, ratifying and confirming a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the borrower pertaining to a year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, approving and authorizing a note purchase agreement, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing application to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, approving and authorizing professional services agreements, approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses, and containing other provisions relating thereto. This is the companion resolution to what we discussed earlier. Are there further questions about this resolution? Or action by the trustees?
Move adopt?
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt Resolution SUA 2025-5.
Second. Motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. Resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item B is Resolution SUA 2025-6, a resolution declaring the intent of the Stillwater Utilities Authority to expend certain funds in connection with certain water and wastewater system improvements, with set expenditures to be reimbursed from the proceeds of debt to be incurred by the authority, and containing other provisions related thereto.
This is what's referred to as a reimbursement resolution. It would just allow the authority to expend a project-related expenses, and if they're eligible, they can be reimbursed from proceeds of the loan.
Questions, trustees? Or action?
Motion to adopt SUA 2025-6.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. Vote of five to zero, resolution is adopted. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA, please vote. Vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for August 18th, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. Vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item 5A is a Chamber of Commerce report from Carrie Moore.
I want everyone to know that if my voice shakes, it's simply because it's freezing in here.
It's nice if you're wearing a jacket.
Should have planned better. Oh, here we are. I never remember how to make it full screen here. Is it this one? Okay, so just handed to Councilor Harden the final copy of our strategic plan for economic development within the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce. Really excited about that. You guys may have noticed the updated mission statement on our first slide here. We, as you guys, many of you know, this is something we're just kind of updating, but we partnered with our team at the city, with our team at Meridian, and some of our community investors to create a really great plan, a new mission statement, and then identify our core values. So we have updated those based on that feedback, and this will be our guiding post. This will be embedded on the GRO Stillwater website. So if anybody wants an additional copy of that, they can call the chamber, we can send it over if they want it before it's on the website. Moving forward, this is something we're gonna go in-depth, so I hope you guys are planning to be here for quite a while. Just kidding. I just wanted to include this as a fun little tidbit of awareness. So in every project that we, not every project- So in every project that we, not every project, but on a regular basis, these are the conversations that come up in what we're doing in economic development. So there are questions tied to each of these that spin off, that we are navigating, we are learning to understand, we're asking the right people, we're partnering with others to get that information. So in our wheelhouse of everything that we do, we have to know and have partners that we can collaborate with that can help us answer these questions. So that's more of just, what have we been up to? We've been working with these partners. Now the fun stuff. So earlier this year, we got to partner with Meridian Technology and the Department of Commerce on what's called, in short, slang, OIEP, which is the Oklahoma Innovation Expansion Program. Historically, Meridian has partnered with Commerce to do this on their own. So this program launched in 2021, and you'll see in 2025, we put it in white, this is where we stepped in to partner and say, hey, you guys are doing a great job, this is a phenomenal opportunity for our local businesses to get state funds and be reimbursed their employee income tax. And so we came in, we said, what can we do to help? And we put out a program that created awareness, it was marketing, and then we also did a, we created kind of a filter where we could either qualify or disqualify these businesses and save our friend Pat Crane at Meridian some time. And so with that, this year, we had 17 businesses awarded in Stillwater for a total of $853,000 in a total project cost of almost $3.5 million invested in our community. Also wanted to notate, this number down here at the bottom of the total for the years that this program has been going, and the years that Meridian has been working with Commerce directly on this program, they have done a ton of work to get us to a point where we could come along and, come alongside and help enhance it as well. So super proud of them, because it is not a small process, there's a two-week window to submit these applications, and it's kind of like the Wild West, because they apply those funds as they receive the application, so it's first come, first served. It's not a, hey, we're going to receive all these and then review them and then do it. It's, they let everyone know, this two-week window's coming, you better be ready to submit those first couple days. So I know Pat puts in a ton of time and energy in working with those entities beforehand so that they're ready. With that, this year, we had 19 companies total submit applications. 17 of them were awarded, one turned down OIEP for another incentive, one was denied due to not meeting payroll requirements. The additional business, we had one more that was awarded, but that wasn't with our assistance, they didn't work with Meridian, they didn't work with us directly, they just did it on their own, and they were awarded, but we didn't want to take credit for them because that's not our wheelhouse. So anyway, we actually had a total of 938,000 awarded to Stillwater. New wages, over $2 million, almost $3 million in new wages, 57 new jobs created, and if we were looking at this as a project, like if we had had a company that wanted to locate in Stillwater, this would be a big win for our community. And so when we think about business retention and expansion, we think about these partnerships, we think about investing in our local businesses and our local economy, this is a huge win and a, and a great partnership that we're excited to continue to do next year. I'm going to pause before I move on. Questions, comments, concerns?
I was going to say, great job, but ask your question.
Go ahead. Help me understand the source of these funds.
So, this is done through, every employer pays an employee payroll tax. Once those companies hit a certain, they have an annual payroll of $625,000, they qualify. If they want to do a project, they want to invest in expansion, they want to invest in equipment, they want to do something like that, they can apply to the OIEP. OIEP looks at the project and says, okay, is there a return on investment for this? Are you creating jobs? Is it, is it creating projects? Is it creating growth within our industry? They say yes, then they get approved, the Oklahoma Finance Authority then reimburses them as they get that payroll tax, and then they can use those dollars towards the project.
I saw what I wanted to say. Great job.
Thanks. Teamwork makes the dream work. Okay, this is the fun stuff. So we actually got to host, it's all fun, I think I say that every time. I really like doing this. So we got to host Select Oklahoma this year, that is the state economic development entity. And we also, as part of that, got to host a mock site visit. So this was a phenomenal opportunity for us to look at our community partners, to look at what we're doing, and go, hey, we're going to do a test run without risking losing a project or an opportunity for our community. With that, we had awesome partnerships, and one of the things that the site selectors were really proud of and really excited about was that we provided them an opportunity at Kicker to meet with some of our industry leaders and industry partners without any of us in the room. So they got to give really candid feedback about what it's like to work in Stillwater, what it's like to live in Stillwater, what it's like to do business here, and we were really proud of the feedback that we got. So it was really great. One of the key things they talked about was how vital our airport is, and what a great resource that is for them as business professionals, for recruitment, for strategic partnerships. The other thing that they talked about was having the opportunity to work with the city in a way where, once they have a problem and they get connected to the right person, it gets solved. And so they were really proud of the relationships that they've had and very positive feedback. So the other thing was, we did what we call public-private partnership showcase. So typically, with these events, the community that hosts them hosted dinner where they invite the other economic development professionals in the organization to network with site selectors. Our team that put that together thought that didn't seem like a very good use of time or a great way to showcase the community. So instead, we mimicked what our young professionals had recently done, and we did a public-private partnership, pub crawl or Bruce Cruise, and we took everyone through downtown to talk about what it has been like to see the growth in Stillwater and what it's like to work here and to do business, and the site selectors ate it up. They loved it. So one of them, their daughter was actually looking at coming to school in Stillwater, and he's really hoping she does. So we are too, right? So we had a lot of partners that made that happen. It was a phenomenal event, and we were actually able to implement some of the things that we learned through that process in two of the site visits we've had since then. So it was a great investment for us. Any questions about that? I want to give a huge thanks to Kristi, because we got to give a behind-the-fence tour of Block 34 before it opened as part of that pub crawl, and I actually got some fun videos of the site selectors playing on the music equipment. And also, they have since followed us on social media to keep up with what was happening, so that's been fun to see as well. Okay, so this is that strategic plan that you guys received. So we completed, we had as part of our contract a NICS code analysis, and that helped us identify four target industries. What we're going to do with that now is utilize those NICS codes to then recruit companies that make sense. So that's North American Industrial Classification System. So what that tells us is that these target industries, if they fall in those NICS codes, then they are a fit for our community. So we're pulling in something that is going to be sustainable, and we're not going to try to reinvent the wheel, but also complements our existing industries, whether that is workforce or talent development, or infrastructure, or whatever those needs may be. The other thing is, we, we've had two site visits this last quarter, which is huge on our contract. We had hoped to get one, things in Stillwater are moving, we're getting a lot of great attention, and people are enjoying being here. And so having two site visits in one quarter is huge, when, when we had hoped for one a year. So I think we're going to have to readjust our expectations moving forward.
We'll readjust them for you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So what to expect next? A couple of things. So our recruitment video that we have been talking about, that we're very excited, is going to be launched at the Merrill State of the City in September. So if you have been wanting to see that, or you're curious, get on the chamber website and register for that luncheon. Or it's livestreamed, I believe, correct? Yes. So, huh, you're busy that day? Yeah, I'd hope so. We have more, have had more site visits that we'll report in the next quarter update, and then also we'll be presenting our Small Business University results, which always exciting, it's my favorite program that we do. And that's it.
Awesome. Trustees, questions?
Remind me when the hub opens.
This fall. Okay. This fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You were at the Google event this last week.
I was.
Which was great, and, and it was great to see some of the interaction with Tulsa-area chamber folks and other site selectors and just the, I mean, just being in that room with a lot of people who are engaged in economic development and industrial development around the state, could tell that, that Stillwater is on a lot of people's radar. Had a lot of conversations with people who have made comments about talking to you, or talking, you know, about Stillwater, or having heard about things that are happening in Stillwater. So that was, you know, just from my perspective, you know, we don't have a lot of events like that. I haven't attended a lot of events like that, but it was nice to be at one and hear so many great things about not just the community, but, but also how much we are, how much attention is being paid to what's happening here right now, and certainly you guys play a role in that, for sure.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you. Enjoy it.
I'd like to, if it's okay, also compliment, you know, the Select OK was an incredible event, hats off to you all for that event. I know all of you that went and attended, it was, it was really valuable. Great work, continuing Kingspan. Yeah, you guys have done a terrific job landing that project and continued those, that relationship with them and their growth. And then recently, I do want to share that we met with a partner that the chamber had helped to attract for USA Rare Earth, and had some really successful meetings, and I think that's going to help them and the USA Rare Earth Project really take off. And so, yeah, hats off to Carrie and Elaine and their whole team, and Rebecca gave a great presentation for that same prospective, I'm trying not to use their, their name, the prospective client that came to Stillwater. They were really impressed with Meridian, what they have to offer and for the Stillwater community. So, yeah, hats off to what you all are doing. It's a busy quarter.
We've got the right people in the right seat on the bus and everybody wanting to work together, which makes a huge difference. And at that same site visit, one of the comments that was made at the end with wrapping up was, that representative asked us, do you guys, are you guys aware of how blessed you are to live here? And for me, that was like, then we did it. Because we do realize that we are very proud of it, and if you can convey that to somebody in a four or five-hour window, I think as a team, we're doing the right things.
You know, just seeing kind of where we are, and honestly, I mean, if we, if we look at, you know, the data center, the Kingspan facility, the USA Rare Earth facility, that, I mean, just in that industrial expansion in and of itself is decades in some communities. You know, go, kind of going from, how do we fill a vacant spot that we've got to, now we've got vacant spots filled and people who are saying, what else can we get? Where else can we go? You know, we'd like to be there now too. There is a shift, hopefully there's a shift in our future from go find whatever we can find to now managing demand that we may not always be able to fill. And, and how do we figure out a way as a community to say, we want to transition to being, okay, now we can be, I like what I'm seeing in terms of targeting, say, okay, this is the kind of stuff we're looking for, we're not just anybody who will buy this building, we're happy to talk to you, but we want to be more, more focused, I'm glad to see that. But there's definitely, as part of the strategic plan of, how do we go to that next step of saying what, you know, what do we want to see? How do we manage growth when we don't necessarily have places for them to grow to that we've had in the past? So there's a, it's super exciting, I'm just incredibly excited where we are right now, but it's also a little daunting to start thinking of, okay, we generated some interest, now what do we do with it all?
Yeah.
And, and that's a, that's a big next step.
It's a fun problem to solve. Like, everything's figureoutable and nothing's permanent. So as we navigate and we continue to grow, those are exactly, like in economic development, that's the dream, right? That's exactly what you want to happen, is to go from that reactive to getting to a place where you can be really proactive and intentional, so.
I think, yeah, that intention, I think, comes through in the strategic plan and just understanding what kind of, what kind of data do we need to, to have and gather and kind of be on top of, and to help us tell our story, to attract those specific businesses. I like some of the words in there in terms of just being sustainable for our community and really developing for long-term outcomes and growth. So thank you for all your work.
Thanks for your help. Okay.
Good.
Awesome. Have a great night.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here and waiting through all of it, and it's kind of a long meeting. You're used to it. Anything further from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn SUA, or SEDA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SEDA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.